Good morning. It's ten o'clock and that's the time that was noticed and posted for our meeting of the Board of Supervisors. It's April the ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. It's ten o'clock A.M. And we're in the Board of Supervisors Hearing Room, Melody Lane, Bisbee. Pursuant to A.R.S. thirty-eight dash four thirty-one point oh-two H, the public will have physical access to the meeting place fifteen minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion and possible action. And if you would stand, please, and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution, to the Constitution of the United States, and to the republic of which it stands on this issue and to its support with the Republican and Communist Party.
Thank you. You may be seated. The order or deletion of any item on this agenda is subject to modification at the meeting. And the board may vote to recess into an executive session for the purpose of obtaining legal advice from the board's attorney on any matter listed on the agenda pursuant to A.R.S. thirty-eight dash four thirty-one point oh-three A-three. We begin with the roll call. District one?
Crosby is here.
District two, Supervisor English is present. District three?
Supervisor Judd is here.
We have a complete board. Members of the public may attend this meeting by Microsoft Teams computer or mobile app or by phone by calling six oh two six oh nine seven five one three or eight 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 six eight zero six seven one four, conference ID nine eight six one zero two three three five pound. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call five two zero four three two nine two zero zero four direction. The board may permit public comment during the discussion of any item on this agenda. To speak on an agenda item or during the call to the public, complete and return the speaker request form to the clerk of the board prior to nine A.M. on the day of the meeting. Note, some attachments may be updated after the agenda is published. This means that some presentation materials displayed at the board meeting may differ slightly from the attached version. And we begin with the call to the public. Uh, the first person is Mignon Hollis in person. You come to the microphone, give us your name and address.
Good morning. Mignon Hollis, forty-five forty-two, East Vista Grande, Hereford, Arizona. Um, economic development is a team sport and can't be and can only be successful when work is not done in a silo. And I am so grateful to the county, more specifically to the three Board of Supervisors, as well as your county administrator and Dan Coxworth. If it wasn't for all of you and the support that we get and this amazing team, um, what we are doing out at the BDI Airport would not be possible. And I just wanted to make sure that you're publicly thanked for your support. So often, it's so much easier to criticize the county, to criticize the board supervisors. But I did want to state today the positive impact that you were having in this county, and we're just so grateful to have you and the support. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, next is Mary Sparkman, and I believe she's on Teams. Mary, are you there? Mary Sparkman?
She's of yours.
Would you unmute yourself, Mary? We can't hear you. Mary, can you unmute yourself? I'm going to move on to the next person that's on Teams, and that is Tricia Jaredette. Is Tricia Jaredette, are you there?
Yes. Good morning, Supervisors. Tricia Jaredette, Sierra Vista. Um, I want to say that I'm sorry that the county is losing Tim Maddox for our Elections Department. But it sounds like he has built a solid team to carry on with election credentials in place. I was able to view the hand recount verification for the presidential preference election. The Elections Department team ran that effort under Tim's supervision. And people were there from both major parties. They participated in it. They observed the handling and securing of the ballots. This was a simple election. And it didn't take long to have the hand count match the machine count. And everyone cheered. I don't think it will be as simple or as quick when we handle the July thirtieth primary. But I look forward to observing and participating in the election efforts in the rest of two thousand and twenty-four. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Uh, I think we'll try again for Mary Sparkman. Are you there, Mary?
She can't hear our meeting? Um, so she asked? Oh, you can now. Oh, good. Thank you, Mary.
Okay.
I didn't understand what you said.
I think Mary's online. My phone because there was no sound on my computer for some reason.
Would you go ahead, please? You have three minutes.
Okay. Uh, first, I wanted to talk about the Planning and Zoning Committee. I would like to know how the people are picked for the committee. And if these positions, when they're open, are they posted anywhere? Um, because right now there is a person on the committee that is violating rules. And, um, I had to call because their their property was zoned as agriculture. And now it's not because it wasn't agriculture. Um, uh, and then they also have a business on their property that he does car repairs, and I know this because I've had my car repaired there. And then, um, they also have trailers on their property, and they are not a trailer park. Um, and there was a community met meeting held about all these violations, and they were told by a Board of Supervisor member that don't worry about any of the violations. So is there something in the rule that states an unincorporated town does not have to follow the rules like anyone else? And also, these same people are building a house on their property. They're, um, disguising it as a barn on the outside, but on the inside, it's going to be a house. Um, again, so is there rules that unincorporated areas don't have to follow laws because some people, they get in trouble for not having a permit and that, and other people that seem to, it doesn't matter. Now, I'm going to talk about the special district personnel. I was wondering if maybe you can't have a person assigned to do special districts because right now it's assigned to the Elections Department. And when we call the elections people, they don't know anything. And they just tell us, we don't know. We don't know. It goes through the county. I was just wondering if maybe we could have a special person assigned to do special districts um, so that we could talk to somebody and they can tell us where to go, how to do something if there's a concern. Now, my next concern would be the San Simone Fire District, and I'm not going to read all that. You should have gotten a copy of all my concerns. And if you would just read that and, um, because there's supposed to be a meeting tonight, and now that I guess they rescheduled it because it wasn't posted in time. But, um, you can read those on your own, and I also sent a copy of the agenda where he has it posted, that it was posted at seventeen hundred hours, but it wasn't. And then the next thing is I have a concern about Olga Road, and I've already called the County Roads Department and let them know too, but I would really like that road to be redone.
The time is up.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, the next person is Sandy Trul. Says she's in person.
Hello, Sandy Trul from Sierra Vista. France banned mail-in voting in nineteen seventy-five due to fraud. Mexico banned mail-in voting in nineteen ninety-two due to fraud. Belgium banned mail-in voting in two thousand and eighteen due to fraud. Sweden does not permit mail-in voting. Italy does not permit mail-in voting. Ukraine does not permit mail-in voting. Russia does not permit mail-in voting. Japan does not permit mail-in voting. No Middle Eastern country permits mail-in voting. And no Latin country permits mail-in voting. Thank you.
She's online, but she needs to unmute herself.
You're muted, Allison.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, well, thank goodness we live in the United States of America. Good morning. I'm Allison Morris, a registered voter from Portal, and I'm grateful for this opportunity to speak today. I would just like to clarify a statement that Supervisor Crosby made in response to one of my speeches last month. This is not a criticism, just a presentation of facts regarding the hand count issue of late two thousand and twenty-two. Mr. Crosby said that County Attorney Brian McIntyre had determined that A.R.S. sixteen six oh two B was illegal. But Mr. McIntyre was referring to the agenda item that was about to be passed. The item was a modified version of A.R.S. sixteen six oh two B, which refers to hand count audits of Election Day precinct ballots. The official statute directs the county officer in charge of the election to oversee the audit, but Mr. Crosby's version had included the recorder as well. The statute goes on to say that at least two percent of the precincts in that county or two precincts, whichever is greater, shall be selected at random. The agenda item described in the expanded hand count of all precincts. By definition, a hundred percent is not random. According to statute, which has also been proven in court, any increase in the in, excuse me, any increase in the required two percent hand count would come about only if the designated margin is exceeded, which it hasn't in Cochise County. I'd also like to point out that according to the court transcript of the hand count hearing on November fourth of two thousand and twenty-two, Recorder Stevens testified that he was planning to conduct a full one hundred percent hand count of all ballots, referring to sixteen six oh two B and F, early ballots. Mr. Stevens affirmed that Supervisors Judd and Crosby had directed him to perform a one hundred percent hand count audit of every vote cast in Cochise County. Recorder Stevens not only expressed his willingness to violate A.R.S. sixteen six oh two B and F, but also sixteen six oh two H, which has to do with taking custody of ballots from the county officer in charge of election, who at the time was Lisa Mara. Recorder Stevens also testified that he would report the number that the audit produced. That's his quote. Arizona statute six-two-two, however, requires that the final number to be submitted to the Secretary of State is the result printed by the vote tabulating equipment, not from a hand count audit. These are the facts according to legal documents and statutes, and I would very much like the record to reflect these facts regarding the hand count issue of two thousand and twenty-two. Thank you.
Thank you. We now go to the old.
I get to respond to Ms. Morrison. And basically, the day after.
That was not a criticism, by the way. That was just, uh, those are just statements of facts, Mr.
Uh, I'm still going to respond because I can't. I don't want to. The day after October twenty-fourth was October twenty-fifth, and the Secretary of State's letter to the Board of Supervisors said the precinct hand count audit may only be conducted on regular ballots cast at vote centers in Cochise County on Election Day and may not include any early ballots, et cetera, et cetera. That is sixteen six oh two B. So, however, the Secretary of State or the State Elections Director would have said we should handle sixteen six oh two B would have been the way we would have handled it, and it was McIntyre who said both agenda items were illegal on October twenty-fourth and started the whole mess. Okay, that confused my remarks at this time.
Now, um, we have agenda items that are public hearings. Uh, item number eight, I'd like to have a motion before we have discussion.
Madam Chair, on consent agenda? The consent agenda?
Oh, the consent agenda. I'm sorry. Items one through seven on the consent agenda.
Is it one through seven or is it one through?
Like, you?
Is it one through nine?
No, the public hearings can't be on the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I move we accept the consent agenda items one through seven.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second that can be now discussed, so I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and approved. We now move to the public hearings, and I'm looking for a motion on item number eight before we have discussion.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve Series Twelve Restaurant New Liquor License Application submitted by David James Smith for Coronado Vineyards located at twenty-nine oh nine East Country Club Drive, Wilcox, Arizona, eight five six four three.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, so now, uh, ask Laura. Give us the particulars.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, this is for a new Series Twelve Restaurant liquor license application submitted for Coronado Vineyards in Wilcox. The application's been reviewed and recommended for approval by the appropriate departments. Property taxes for the parcel are current. The notice and application were posted as required by state law, and no formal protests were received. The applicant has paid the one hundred dollar processing fee, and board staff is recommending approval.
Thank you. Uh, we'll now open the public hearing on the approval of the Series Twelve new liquor license application. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak either for or against this issue? Hearing none, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. We do have a motion and a second on the floor, but I always offer the opportunity for an explanation or anything from the board if you wish to add.
No, please, this time.
I, I actually have a, a quick comment. My, um, I've had lots of experience with that property, including being there when I was a girl, and it was beautiful and a running golf course, swimming pool. I, um, also helped to clean it up, did the drafting work to put it all back together um, in the nineties. And it's just, and I know the people that are doing this, and it is just a wonderful property. It's absolutely beautiful. There are weddings there. There are memorials there. It's a, it's a beautiful property, and I'm personally very excited to see this turning back into a, a restaurant, like, you know, here before the board today. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and so ordered. Uh, the next public hearing we have is also for a new liquor license. Could I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move we approve Series Twelve Restaurant New Liquor License Application submitted by Michelle Minta for Olive's Vineyard Cafe located at sixty-three forty-five South Rome Line Way, Wilcox, Arizona, eight five six four three.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a, a motion and a second, Laura.
Again, Madam Chair, members of the board, this is for a new Series Twelve Restaurant Record Liquor License at Olive's Vineyard Car Cafe located in Wilcox. The application's been reviewed and recommended for approval by the appropriate departments. First half property taxes for the parcel were paid April eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. The notice and application were posted as required by state law, and no formal protest were received. The applicant has paid the one hundred dollar processing fee, and board staff is recommending approval.
I'll open the public hearing then on the new Series Twelve liquor license. Hearing none, seeing none in the public, I will close the public hearing. We do have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion or information you want to add?
Um, I just have to comment again. I, I don't want to, um, leave them out because this is a really important application as well to me. So, thank you. That's all.
Go ahead. Did I vote in?
Nope, that's all.
Okay, uh, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and so ordered. We now move on to the action items. And the first one is, uh, with the Board of Supervisors, could I have a motion about a proclamation?
Madam Chair, I move we approve a proclamation declaring April sixth through twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four as the week of the young child in Cochise County.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. I believe that we have some people here, uh, representing first things first.
Yes, ma'am. Um, Madam Chair, County Supervisors and staff, it is such a privilege to be before you today. My name is Demetrius Simonton, and I am the First Things First Regional Council Member. I have the privilege of serving on a number of different boards and leading a number of different boards throughout the state, but the one that I'm proud of the most is our First Things First because it is the board where we are focusing on the future of our communities, which is our young children, birth through five. We've been traveling our beautiful county, working with local officials, bringing awareness and attention to the National Week of the Young Child and uh, recommitting ourselves to our work and reestablishing and bringing awareness of the quality-first education centers that we provide, help support throughout Cochise County. We want to thank the County Board of Supervisors for acknowledging this, and we look forward to continuing to work with you and support a number of different facilities throughout Cochise County.
I, I just have one question while you're there, Demetrius.
Yes.
Uh, could you tell me how many centers you have in Cochise County?
We have thirty-three throughout Cochise County.
Thirty-three?
And then one vacancy, and I think, was that in Wilcox that we're working? Yeah. So we have one vacancy, and we're working to get that, uh, filled, and that's in, in Wilcox.
Great.
If I'm not mistaken, you cut your teeth on the Youth Commission, Sierra Vista.
Yes, proud, uh, Sierra Vista Youth Commission member, and, and yeah, that's, that's where it all started. Yes, sir. And I believe he was on council at that time, so thank you, Mr. Crosby.
And you were a young child?
Yes, yes, yes. Born and raised, uh, basically in Sierra Vista. My family moved out here in nineteen fifty-four to help real important with you, because so I am proud to stay and be committed to, to this county. And I look forward to being able to serve in a number of different capacities, and this one, like I said, is the one that I'm proud of the most.
Well, I, I thank you for your commitment to the young child. That is our hope.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this issue?
No.
All right. Then we have a motion and a second, and so I will call for the vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and so ordered. And thank you for bringing your dark intention. Uh, next is from the County Sheriff. While Mr. Giugianto is coming forward, I need a motion, please, about the work plan.
Okay, Madam Chair, I move that we approve the annual work plan for Cooperative Service Agreement twenty-four seventy-four dash oh four dash oh two two eight dash R.A. between Cochise County and the United States Department of Agriculture, USDA Animal and Plant Health Inspection Service and Wildlife Services in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars and eighty-four cents, effective July first, two thousand and twenty-four through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
I noticed that there, before you seconded, and I noticed there was, uh, you said, um, twenty-four dash seventy-four. I believe it's seventy-three.
Okay.
That's a clerical error, and I wanted to make sure it was in the, in the record as such. Go ahead, come.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have a, a motion and a second. Mr. Giugianto.
Hi, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Uh, the Sheriff's Office is here to request renewal of our contract with the USDA for wildlife specialists. I believe the specialist has been employed with us for over a decade. Um, so we're, we're requesting his contract. He, um, he takes charge of dealing with, um, some nuisance animals, uh, and other species that our animal control officers and deputies don't deal with, but there's a, a need in the community to address them, things like skunks, uh, feral dogs, coyotes, woodpeckers, um, all those kind of things. Uh, like everything, uh, lately, uh, his cost for services has increased. Um, but it's still well worth the value we get out of the position.
Any questions or comments?
Oh, man.
I, I, it, it's a worthwhile service, and I know he even goes to other counties and on the fort and wherever there's a problem with wildlife and, uh.
Yes, he's a busy man.
That the, the County Sheriff's Department doesn't want to handle.
Absolutely.
Snakes, whatever it is.
I don't want to crawl under a house to get a skunk.
Right. All right, any other comments, questions from the board? Hearing none, we have a motion, so I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and it's unanimous and so ordered. Thank you. Uh, item number twelve. Uh, Susan, while you're coming up, uh, could I have a motion about the trust fund grant?
Madam Chair, I move we approve acceptance of the state's housing trust fund grant from the Arizona Department of Housing in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for owner occupied housing repair.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Susan, an explanation, please.
Yes, good morning, everyone. Um, we're here to request that the board accept this grant.
Speak up just a little bit, either that or turn up for me.
It's, it's, um, um, sorry, online, you can hear it very clearly here. It's a little softer, so we can turn up the, the speakers that are located here.
Okay.
We're here to, uh, request that the board accept this grant. It's a state housing trust fund grant. Uh, it's in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Previously, in January of two thousand and twenty-four, the board authorized us to apply for this grant. Um, in April, we received approval, uh, from the Arizona Department of Housing for this grant. The eligible beneficiaries are Cochise County residents whose income does not exceed fifty percent of the area median income. Additional requirements are the grant are eighty percent of the recipients have to live in a manufactured home, and it must be owner occupied. Um, in addition, the grant requires a minimum investment of a thousand and a maximum investment of two hundred and fifty thousand. It is a streamlined bidding process, and no environmental review is required for this grant.
Thanks, Sam, but you're going to get some housing repairs done. Thank you.
Yes.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Uh, we've talked about this before. I would hope that in the future, we have a little more flexibility on it so that we could apply some of this to some of the problem properties like, like I mentioned to you before.
Right, we're, we're bound by the criteria that the state or the U.S. Department of Housing sets. And so we, we aren't able to deviate from their criteria. Um, but this grant is a little different than our CDBG grant, so it will, uh, allow us to work in the floodplain, for example, where we were not allowed to work in the floodplain on the CDBG grant. It also, because it's a simplified bidding process, it opens up additional contractors uh, to bid on the projects who might not otherwise want to go through the formal bidding process, which, um, was not only time-consuming but required registration in SAM.gov, um, which is a lengthy process, and and so those are a few areas where we have a little more flexibility. But we, we do still have to, uh, comply with the criteria, which doesn't, yeah, open it up to all residents.
Okay, uh, and what we've talked about is the stipulation for owner occupied, and, and I understand that that's the way it is. Do you happen to know if that owner occupied stipulation is out of the state regulations or the federal regulations? Point being, if it was state regulations, perhaps we could press that to our legislators.
This grant is a state grant. It's out of their, uh, trust fund funds. It's not a U.S. Department of Housing grant. And so they are also, they, the state, are also imposing the owner occupied requirement on the grant. The CDBG is subject to federal regulations, so that would most likely be a federal requirement. But they have mirrored that requirement in the state grant.
I understand. Uh, nonetheless, I, I hope that, uh, perhaps by addressing our faithful legislators, we can get some flexibility there to be applied at the Board of Supervisors. Thank you very much for your, your presentation.
Any other questions or comments from board members?
No.
Okay, uh, is this for the entire county, even in the cities?
This does allow us to work within the city limits of Sierra Vista and the city limits of Douglas. The previous grant did not.
Right, that's why I brought it up, because I wanted people to understand that this was different than the CDBG.
It is.
Because they receive their own CDBG money, but this one is outside that and can be utilized within the city of Sierra Vista and the city of Douglas.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, any other comments or questions?
Well, then I would, well, I do have a comment now. Um, so I understand that it has to be limited so not to go over. But because of it being limited to Sierra Vista and Douglas, um, it does go out to all the, all the county residents. It, it's not a regional, that does kind of sound a little bit regional to me.
Now, you didn't understand my comment. Um, the CDBG was limited to outside of Douglas and Sierra Vista. This grant can be used inside the city of Douglas or the city of Sierra Vista, so it's, it's different, so.
CBDG could be used in any community city limits other than Bisbee and, and I mean Douglas and Sierra Vista then.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right.
This one can be used anywhere in the county. Be used anywhere in the county.
Good, thank you.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Hearing none, then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye and it's unanimous and so ordered. Thank you, Susan. Uh, Daryl, while you're coming up, I'd like to have um a motion on the floor about the grants for Arizona Public Service.
Madam Chair.
I move we approve two grants, abatement to Arizona Public Service APS for parcels, one oh two dash three zero dash one one four W and one oh two three zero dash one one eight for the new facilities maintenance building effective April ninth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Um, Daryl?
Yeah, how are you doing?
Good.
Um, I I'm sorry, I misunderstood what you were saying.
I said, could you explain to us the the need for the grants?
You bet. This is this is for the program power into the new facilities building that is um in process of being constructed. Um, there is two two different parcels that that power line will cross getting to that new building and that's why there's there's two different abements.
Any other questions or comments for Daryl?
Which building is this?
That's the the new the new facilities building that's one right there on Herper Grove.
I see, thank you.
Hasn't been built yet?
No, no.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
None.
Hearing none, then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye and it's unanimous and so ordered. Uh, next, Daryl, you're on again, so let's have a motion about the um air conditioning units.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve proposal seven six three six five two seven with Train U S Inc. for the replacement of one heating, ventilation and air conditioning H V A C unit at fourteen fifteen Melody, that West Melody Lane Building E on the um in the amount of one hundred and twenty-three thousand one hundred and seventy-seven dollars, effective April ninth, twenty twenty-four.
Sir.
We have a motion and a second.
Well, that's the the air conditioning unit that works on Building E here on this front. Um, it's it's another one that is twenty years old. Uh, it is R twenty-two, which we can't even purchase anymore, so it is definitely past due and needs to be replaced.
Uh, Building E, does it mean much to the public? Who who's in that building?
Uh, the Treasury.
Any other questions or comments?
Not at this time, thank you.
Here we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye and it's unanimous and so ordered. Thank you, Daryl.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item, I need to been waiting all this time. Got a PowerPoint and everything, all right. Let's let's have a motion on the floor and a second, please.
Madam Chair, I move we adopt resolution twenty-four dash oh five to approve A C C O three four streamline annual as section eight housing choice voucher administrative plans for fiscal year twenty twenty-four.
I'll second that.
Here we have a motion and a second and rebounds of of the display. This must be a government program.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board and County Administration. It's that time of year again that I'm here to ask your approval for the Housing Authority of Cochise County Annual and Administrative Plan. This will be effective July first, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. So the first part of the annual plan, uh, section A, just pretty much provides uh detailed information about the Housing Authority or name, the the number issued by HUD and so on and so forth. So for the purpose of this presentation, I get uh directly to section B of our annual plan. Again, all of these revisions will be effective on July first, twenty twenty-four. The first change that we made in our administrative plan, and you probably noticed in the annual plan there are quite a few changes that that we've made per HUD's request. Um, however, for the purpose of this presentation and time and allowing you guys to go home sometime this week, I uh I I've only highlighted a few of the changes that we've made, but I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have about the the annual plan. But the first thing that we did was we removed um the section in under uh section eight portability, where we, it's first in, uh, first offered of absorption for our portability. So that's removed so that that one restriction is not in there for for absorbing portability. And portable vouchers come to us from different jurisdictions. And um we can either absorb the voucher or bill the Housing Authority where they're coming from. And um and it depends on our current lease up and our current um funding, whether we bill the other Housing Authority or we absorb. So um the some of the um the changes that HUD requested we made, most of them are for are determining what the participants' portion of the rent will be and what the Housing Authority's portion of the rent will be. And again, I just highlighted a few of them. One of them is in uh, they're all in chapter nine of our administrative plan. All the changes are in chapter nine of our administrative plan. And in section nine point one, under income exclusions from income and deductions from income, we are now able to use state harbor income verification. And one of the um, one of the uh examples of documentation that we're allowed to use is in a warrant letter from uh federal programs, from relevant federal programs within the last twelve months of the review of the documentation. Another one is for uh elderly disabled family deductions. And uh part of what we can do is deduct out of pocket medical expenses to reduce what the participant is, um, has to pay for their portion of the rent. So that and that amount has been increased from four hundred to five hundred and twenty-five for out of pocket medical expenses that we can deduct from uh from the head of household. We also have a change for childcare expense deductions and hardship exemptions uh to childcare expense deductions. This is for foster adult children who are not family members, but they are members of the household. Those uh those foster adult children need to be considered when determining the unit size. So in other words, how many bedrooms the family is approved for, but their income is excluded. So if they receive social security or social security disability, that income would not be included in the overall income for the household. The definition of independent contractor has also been um added. And one of the definitions is for a seasonal worker, which is hired into short term position and their employment begins at the same time each year. And I thought that was extremely relevant for Cochise County, so that's one of the reasons I'm adding it. Revisions to the P H A elements um continued under uh settlements, civil rights settlements or judgments. We used to consider them as a lump sum. Now we can consider the scheduled payments as assets instead of just a lump sum. And also uh families are required to report changes uh within ten days of the change to our Housing Authority.
What happens if they don't?
It it could result in, especially if it's somebody moving, um, or if their income has changed. Of course, if their income has changed, that's really going to affect their portion of the rent. So if they under report, then they'll need to enter into a repayment agreement with the Housing Authority to repay the amount that the Housing Authority overpaid and the the participant underpaid. If they move residences and don't notify us, of course, the correspondence won't go to them and um and they might miss really pertinent information from the Housing Authority. Of course, if a- also if they have if they have a child that they don't add to the family composition or they have a child who moves out, then that could also affect their their bedroom size and the rent that they are approved for. Any other questions so far?
Go ahead.
So our financial resources, we have six hundred and eighty-six uh section eight housing choice vouchers. We have eighty-eight HUD bash and uh HUD and the VA have just uh added ten more to our annual contribution contract that will be effective this year. We also have special purpose and emergency housing vouchers. Those are intended, um, you you might be aware that our section eight uh waiting list can sometimes, people can sometimes be on that waiting list for a couple of years before they're actually selected from the waiting list because it's so large. The special purpose and emergency housing vouchers are intended just for that. They're for emergencies, so they're they're guided, they're they're intended for people who are survivors of domestic violence or who are chronically homeless. We've also, um, we, so so we we work with the domestic violence shelters, the homeless shelters, and um and we also work with mental health agencies because people who have a dual diagnosis of um of addiction and um and severely mentally ill, who just need the housing component but no longer need the case management, they are eligible for the emergency housing vouchers as well. It's called Move On. We, last year, we spent nearly three point seven million dollars on programs. And by the end of this fiscal year, we're expected to spend four point nine million dollars. And part of that is due to the increase we we inherited a hundred ninety-three vouchers from Douglas. And we also um, it have increased with some of our other uh programs. So that is one of the reasons we're we're spending one point two million dollars more than we did last year. And our other funding sources come from housing opportunities for persons with AIDS in the amount of two hundred and ten thousand and family self-sufficiency, which is seventy-two thousand. And that seventy-two thousand is for the salary of the family self-sufficiency coordinator only. It doesn't go to the self-sufficiency program. Our housing needs section of the annual plan, our waiting list was opened this year from February first to March first, and we received eight hundred and thirty-five applications. We have not begun pulling from that waiting list yet because we're still pulling from the one that we closed prior to opening this waiting list. But we anticipate we'll be pulling from this waiting list within the next six months. So um eligibility, eligibility selections and admissions are determined by HUD and the Housing Authority for families who have a ha- whose head of household is eighteen years of age or older. So once the family is pulled from the waiting list, as called phase um phase one, then phase two is where we uh where we go ahead and make sure that all the information that we have regarding income and and preferences are all accurate. Head of house or not head of household, but family composition. And um and we we go ahead and do the the background checks and and everything in those different phases. And then in phase three is where when they're issued the voucher. And the rent determination is um determined not only at the admission to the program, but annually after that. Anyone can file a former uh an informal review. Um, it it can be participant families, owners, public, and we investigate and respond to all of those complaints. If it's a participant family, we we normally have an informal review in which we and we invite um a hearing officer from outside of our agency, who's objective to hear both the Housing Authority and the the concerns of the participant. We don't have a home ownership program. However, we do have the F S S program, which promotes self-sufficiency through coordination of supportive services. And you might recall that our family self-sufficiency program is for our participants only. It's designed for people to who are in the position to increase their their income. To do so, they enter into a case management plan with our coordinator at the um it say, and as their income increases, so does their portion of the rent. So if whatever their portion increases by, um, our portion goes down. However, we take that amount and put it into an escrow account for the family. And upon successful graduation from the program, we've had uh participants finish their degrees, start their own businesses and put down payments on homeownership. So um substantial deviation and significant amendment modifications are kind of similar. Um, HUD requires that before we we make any changes um that are substantial or significant, that we notify or that we we put an ad in the paper forty-five days prior to the public hearing, which we did. The the deadline for public comment was last Friday. We received nothing. The definition of substantial deviation is the change in use of federal funds for activities that affect the HACs goals or missions. The definition of significant amendment modification, changes not required by HUD's efficient to Brent admissions policies or waiting lists that change the admin plan. Both do not include changes in organizational structure, budget revision, or minor HUD changes. We don't have any plans for new activities at this time, but when we go through the update of the five-year plan, um, there are a couple of grants that that I hope to follow through with that we set during our five-year, during the work session for a five-year plan. Um, no capital improvements, and I'm happy to report that we didn't have any findings in our audit last year either. So our progress report from our five-year plan is that we continue to be a high performer and under the the HUD regulation. We we continue to expand our HUD bash program, um, receiving ten additional vouchers for this year. Last year, we did not apply for the lead-based paint hazard control grant. Um, you might recall that we intended to, but when the the opportunity uh to absorb the Douglas vouchers presented itself, I wanted to concentrate on all of the changes with that program and essentially not to bite off more than we could chew at the time, so we wanted to perfect those. And um and so it's my plan in um within the next couple of weeks to set up um a a meeting with the Health and Development Service Directors to discuss how we're going to collaborate. Because I think that the the three departments collaborating with the lead-based paint hazard control grant will really bring a great service to our county. We are also, um, although we're not looking to buy any brick and mortar buildings, I'm I'm sure you guys are ready to hear that, um, we are uh we're still considering collaboration with with different organizations and entities uh who want to set aside some of their units for section eight vouchers. And um and as we already touched on, we were awarded the twenty-one emergency housing vouchers and special purpose vouchers. We continue to offer two fair housing seminars um annually, um, and they continue to be virtual. Um, part of our five-year plan was to apply for tenant protection vouchers for foster youth independence. So for for those aging out of the foster youth program. Um, and we have met with Department of Child Services and have determined a need for five vouchers in our area. So that's the second grant that I hope to be applying for this year. So the uh, we continue to provide um our existing programs of the section eight housing choice voucher program, HUD bash, family self-sufficiency and housing opportunity for birthday. I had a resident advisory board meeting scheduled for March sixth. No one was in attendance. Therefore, there were no resident advisory board comments or comments from the public and nothing was challenged regarding our changes. The um HUD five five zero zero seven five, um, the certification by data local officials, P H A consistency with the consolidated plan and state consolidated plan. Ours comes from the Arizona Department of Housing, and we are consistent with that plan by providing lead-based paint education, housing quality standards inspections um that monitors health and safety. And we also participate in homeless outreach strategies. For civil rights certification, the HUD one five zero zero seven seven, um, we a- again, the same information, we provide lead-based paint education, housing quality standards inspections, and we participate in homeless outreach strategies. And I did add um that the year of twenty twenty-four to these two documents that I'll be asking you to sign today that I'll give to Laura. We affirmatively affirmatively further fair housing by the two housing seminars. We also provide information to staff, landlords, tenants and the public. We also partner with the continuum of care. And um in in that, we determine who lacks access to opportunity and we dress, we address inequity. We promote integration. We promote integration and transform racially ethnically concentrated areas to areas of opportunity. Although um, and, and those are, those are, with the transform, uh, or, or transformation, that's something that we have um, a, a group that meets and determines what areas in Cochise County that, that we need to work with the different municipalities and owners to transform. That's it for my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions or address any concerns that you may have.
Um, I think I have a question that uh, you may or may not be able to answer, but um, everyone keeps talking about the lack of housing. We don't have enough housing, we don't have enough housing. We have all of these uh, vouchers available. Do people ever have a hard time finding a place that will accept them?
As a rent, as we saw rental in, or uh, rental prices increased so much post-COVID, we, we saw an issue with that and um, and so the housing authorities nationwide reached out to HUD. And HUD allowed us to request waivers to pay up to a hundred and twenty percent of the payment standards in which we did. We um, so, so that allowed us to be more competitive with the private rental, private rental market. So um, so we've seen that subside over the, the years. And typically, we don't have it reported back to us that there are voucher holders or having a hard time um, finding housing. We are not allowed to recommend one landlord over the other because it, because it's considered steering. But um, but we're happy to advocate for the, the participants and also answer any questions that um, that the landlords might have. Now that the rental prices are, are kind of leveling off a little bit, we um, we no longer are, are a hundred and twenty percent um, payment standard voucher or, or waiver expired at the end of December. So now we're only able to pay up to a hundred and ten percent of the fair market rent.
And you say we're only able to pay up to a hundred and ten. That's the standard in which you match whatever they have to pay and you have to pay to meet a hundred and ten percent?
No, the contracted rent, each year HUD publishes new payment standard. And um, whatever that payment standard is for the bedroom side is um, is what is, is applicable for that calendar year or, or I should say that, that uh, federal fiscal year, which begins in the fall. So um, so the contracted rent cannot go over a hundred and ten percent of the, what's published for the, the fair market rent. They are grandfathered in. So if a fair market rent for last year was more than the fair market rent for this year, then, then uh, the, the person who, who leased up under last year's fair market rent does not have to decrease their contracted rent for this year, if that makes sense.
Any other board members have any questions or comments in this program?
Yes, indeed. I think probably unlikely to see rent going down. It's possible with the project.
I, I can't forecast that, but we have seen it level off. And because we're a smaller community and we have um, relationships with many of the landlords, and many of them have attended our outreach, um, I think that, that we see it a lot in our area, that we have landlords who really want to work with, with our participants.
Okay, here's a question, and I don't necessarily expect you to know the answer. Is lead-based paint still manufactured?
No.
Okay. Uh, and then my last question is, I would like for you to tell me about VAS in emergencies. That was on this page that the, the bottom right says seventy-two thousand on it. You probably don't need to refer to it, but what about uh, okay, let's see. Says eighty-eight HUD VAS plus ten in twenty twenty-four. So now with plus ten, it's eight?
It's ninety-eight.
Okay.
It'll be ninety-eight with the.
Thank you for clarifying that. And, and what about emergencies? And you can tell, tell us about emergencies and how that would apply to veterans and housing.
So the, first of all, veterans is one of our preferences. So people will move up on the waiting list faster if they're a veteran or a widow of a veteran. And so, so that's, that's one of the um, the aspects of it. But the other one is the, for, for HUD VAS or emergency housing, or actually for any of our programs. One of the questions that we have is, are you a veteran? So that we can refer them directly to the VA who determines their eligibility from, uh, as a veteran. And then they'll, they'll, they'll refer them to us for the housing component of it. Part of that, um, part of what the VA looks for is, is they, they conduct what's called a need assessment, need assessment to determine who has a higher priority of needing housing. So um, so the number one tier is a veteran who's already homeless. The number two tier is a veteran who's at risk of becoming homeless.
Okay, I was happy to hear that this is gonna apply to widows also.
Thank you.
Ms. Jeff, you have any comments or questions?
I don't have anything. This is something we hear every year, and there were a lot of changes, but um, that's your business, Anita. I, I love that you do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I think this is a um, a program that's been uh, growing successfully. And um, we seem to be, we, meaning, you know, the housing department, uh, you have no, no findings on your audit, which is always great. You're um, seeming to get like the, the blue ribbon for your processes. And so they offer you more money and more, more vouchers because you're doing it right. So um, a- all I can say is thank you.
Thank you, and we really have phenomenal housing staff. They're, they're committed to those we serve, and they're committed to Cochise County residents. So we're very fortunate to have the staff that we have in housing.
Staff always makes the difference, no matter what department it's in. Committed staff. Any other comments, questions? If not, we have a motion on the floor to adopt resolution twenty-four oh five. There's no questions or comments, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye and it's unanimous in so order.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, state and federal legislation, um, seems like our legislature is uh, only meeting one day a week now and trying to figure out about the budget. So I have nothing uh, agreed to you today. You, you're getting all the same information I am. So I'm gonna move on to Richard Kerwiczko. You have any county matters you want to discuss with us today?
I just wanted to inform the public that uh, you'll see over the next couple of weeks that we have increased the amount of work sessions because we are starting our budget. And so you'll see presentations by the elected officials and discussions from staff regarding uh, what our budget, the budget proposals. Uh, so I just want to inform the public of that.
You know, there's been a big sale on kneepads for my people who are going to come in this.
I have, I have not checked that stat, but I'll have that ready for you.
Summary of current events, uh, District one.
I'm going to pass, thank you.
District two, I will pass. District three.
I'm gonna pass.
Well, okay, then our, our next meeting will be Wednesday, April the tenth at ten a.m. in the Board of Supervisors Hearing Room. And it will be for a budget work session regarding early projections for revenue, expenses and expenditures for Cochise County fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Having said that, this meeting is adjourned, and thank you for attending.